Both of you.[3.29][3.29](laughing). Yeah, Mr. Ferry, of course. Do my -- so that is the lowest bid. Do we have any questions before I accept motions? All right, I am accepting motions.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we award the bid to... Oh, excuse me. Roof replacement or repairs?
We actually were able to get the...
Replacement?
Seventy percent of the main structure replaced and repaired the other thirty percent.
So it's a combination bid?
Yes. We actually exceeded your original estimate there.[41.12][41.12](laughing).
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I move that we award the bid to repair slash replace the roof at the town garage to Mike's construction of Dudley, Mass. at the bid price of $24,400.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this agenda item? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Good work again to our building commissioner, highway superintendent, and town administrator on that.
Thank you. And Mr. Ferry is actually here for items A, B, and B under the town administrator's report. And I'm sorry, Tom, I'm just checking anything else. And 7F.
Sir?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Which agenda item were you here for?
Yeah? I've actually let Almeida's Country Store be closed up.
Liquor licenses?
Liquor license gets approved, so you can hold on to it because we're in the process of changing it over.
Okay. So I think what we should do, in the fairness of time, is move to the approval of the liquor licenses. Then we can go to maintenance of the private ways. Then we will go to approval of the Sarsage contract award for DPW services. And then, if you're still awake, Mr. Commissioner, we'll move...
I'm in the consideration.
We'll move to the discussion on town hall renovations. Is that okay with my colleagues?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we take Agenda Item 8B out of order.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Approval of the liquor licenses. Bear with me just a moment. We do have a list. Okay, so I think... Do we normally do these one by one, or do we do them as a block?
You can do them as a block. I don't know what you normally do.
We've done them singly in the past.
You can do them however.
Okay. In the fairness of time, if nobody... If both of my colleagues don't have any objections with any particular business requesting a liquor license on here, but we do have an update.
We have to put one on hold.
Okay.
So unfortunately, the one on hold is Almeida's. So if you want to go forward with everything, and then we can talk about that one.
Okay. So I think we can do these in the sake of... For the sake of fairness, in a block, and then exclude Almeida's Country Store Incorporated.
Mr. Chairman, I move that... Procedural question first. Do we have to specify all alcohol or wine and malt?
You should, but you can also say as presented, and this is a document attached to the meeting forever, just as open meeting law and public records law.
Okay.
So you can say that as well.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approve the following: all alcohol licenses for Giorgio's Steakhouse, Taunton Yacht Club, Mount Hope Liquors, Medway Enterprise, Aberchilles Corporation, and wine and malt licenses for Brian J. Stone, Alice's Last Stop, Gator Ranny, New Fast Mart, and Winthrop Street Gas.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, that motion passes. Regarding Almeida's Country Store Incorporated, why was that set aside? I know we had received correspondence from the state, correct?
We did receive correspondence from the state regarding they have owed... They owe money to the Kena of the lottery, and it's a substantial sum, and they're not... The ABCC has ruled that they are not allowed to have a liquor license indefinitely.
What happened to the one they currently have?
I've never seen something like that. Well, it's still going on because you...
So they mean not a renewal?
Right. They're not allowed anything anymore, ever, indefinitely. So even if they didn't get approved tonight to renew, they wouldn't be able to apply for a new one. We did call the ABCC to get some... I've never seen something like that, to get some guidance, and we haven't heard back from them. So I was going to request that we handle that one next week, but if you had any questions?
No. The license for most of them is called Almeida's Incorporated, because it hasn't been Almeida's Incorporated for over two years.
So do you think... Okay, that's actually good to know, because it could be a records problem, and it might be not him. But we haven't heard back from the ABCC.
Meaning there may be one request or something in his name?
He was going to go and sell the business. I was actually like, finance him, I was his banker, and also he owes me, just like he owes the state of them. All I'm hoping on is you.
Continue.
At least, you know, they hold on to license, so when I open back up or decide to sell the bill or whatever, the licenses will just move down to somebody else.
So the very unfortunate thing is we really... If the ABCC is pulled, it's indefinite. We cannot license them, which is why we reached out.
But I'll make sure that we talk to them before next week.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we place Almeida's Country Store wine and malt license on the agenda for next week.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion passes.
Do you want to leave contact information?
You should add it, yeah, but I'll do it now.
Thank you, sir.
Just jot it down right here, right underneath that scratch. I don't know where we are now.
Okay, what's the next move?
We are going to move to maintenance of private ways.
Mr. Chairman?
Highway Superintendent Mr. Ferry.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I move that we take Agenda Item 8A out of order.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion passes.
This is a calamity of errors. This was on here due to a miscommunication between myself and Tom. Thank you. So this is on error. We don't need to act on this right now.
Okay. Motion to table?
Um, is it because we already acted on this previously?
Oh, okay. We don't need to table it.
No.
Motion to forget.
It was on my board. It was a fatal flaw. We put it on the board.
No problem. And now we should...
Just for the record, Mr. Chairman, Mrs. Brady, please note for the record that Agenda Item 8A had been acted on previously.
And next, if I could have a motion to move to approval of the Sarsage contract award for DPW services.
I shall move.
Second.
Any further discussion, since we have a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? The ayes have it, that motion passes. Mr. Ferry?
Excuse me. Mrs. Brady, that motion should be just a slight correction to take Agenda Item 8H out of order. All right.
Mr. Ferry?
I believe you have this one.
All right, so this is... So we're back to... I'm sorry, Cable and everybody else watching. All right, so we're back to Town Administrator's report. The first item we have is relative to snow plowing. We... And by "we," I mean Tom, has done all the legwork on this, but we're having difficulty recruiting snowplow drivers, so we have a request to increase the rates. We did previously discuss this. We raised them slightly, and Tom's back to give us some updated recommendations.
Excuse me. Excuse me.
We need to do...
No, no, no. You've got to do the one that we just voted on.
Oh, I thought you just did it.
Approval of the Sarsage contract.
The motion... That's why I corrected the motion. The motion was to take it out of order.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Now we have to act on it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
I even have a to-do on this already in my notebook. So Sarsage is our public consortium. This is the DPW supply... Uh, excuse me, services portion, which is asphalt and all that good stuff that Tom deals with on a regular basis. The highway superintendents that belong to this group approved. The board, that I'm a member of, approved this contract, and it kicks in in February.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Sarsage contract award for DPW services as recommended.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? He gets away without saying anything?
I know. That's my thing. I mean, he helps, but...
I know, I know. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I will send Mr. Moderator. Sorry, Bill.
What is happening to us today?
Something in the water.
It's Mr. Ferry's fault.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we take Agenda Item 6A out of order.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, that motion passes. Madam Administrator?
We, meaning Tom, is having trouble recruiting snowplow drivers, so we're here to request again another increase. We did raise it moderately, but Tom did some research and has more to say on this than me.
Mr. Ferry, the floor is yours, sir.
Yes. The biggest problem we're having with recruitment on a hired truck is the insurance industry has a change in the way they insure vehicles, especially on municipal roadways. The private plates, personnel plates, cannot be used for any type of roadwork. So part of our policy in our carrier policy, the town of Dayton, is to be listed as an additional insurer on their insurance certificate. That's part of our policy. So that cannot happen on the personal plates, and it cannot happen on some of the commercial plates either. So we... I typically hire about seven hired trucks. Right now, I have two that are with the paperwork come back and compliant. I have a lot of interested people. Last month, I had a lot of people come and go. They just look at the numbers, move on. So I looked back at a survey that was done through Searges, which involved 26 communities, and averaged them out this afternoon and get a good consensus of them. And that list, that paper that I believe you have a copy of, I'm recommending, these are averages, close to the averages. It's a little tough, because each town looks at a plow vehicle for hire a little differently. You know, the length of the plow, the size of the vehicle, the weight of the vehicle. I'm interested if it's just a four-wheel-drive truck that's less than a one-ton, you know, a typical pickup truck that's not a 350, you know, like a 1,500. We would hire that. The average for all the communities actually comes out to $75.15, so I'm recommending a 75 for that. The next truck that I typically would be interested in would be a one-ton. A one-ton truck. It could be a pickup truck, but it has to be rated at one-ton. I go for the nine-foot plow. Some other communities go for at least an eight-foot plow. I want at least a nine-foot plow. It can be a six-wheel, one-ton, but it's got to be less between a 350 or the vehicle weight, like the 450s or whatnot. The vehicle's got to be less than a 26,000 pounds. So to fit in that window that I'm looking for, that average comes out is just shy of $80. I'm going to... I'd like to recommend 85 on that one. That's the vehicle I'm really interested in. And the next vehicle up would be over 26,000 pounds with at least a 10-foot plow. That average comes out to $96. I'm recommending 95. And the loader price would be the same, the $110. So we have three loaders available, so it'd be unlikely we're hiring that one.
Those are hourly rates?
Yes, hourly rates. So early in the season, I recommended a slight increase. Somebody else in this room recommended a full $10. She was right, I was wrong.
And that's recorded. Thanks.[888.23][888.23](laughing).
So that's where we should have been when I made the first recommendation, and it might be more palatable. We have some previous vendors that are interested up in... The problem with the insurance is almost three times as much to carry the insurance to plow for us. So they will still entertain it. They just wanted us to do something. So that's where we are tonight.
And you think this will garner more folks that are interested in plowing?
Yes. Yes, I have a lot of inquiries. I'm not interested in stealing plows from other towns, which is very dangerous. We like the vendors that we've had to keep them, and we want to take care of the ones we have, and also make it look attractive for the holes that we have. We have quite a bit of a gap there. So that's what we have, and so I recommend, as I just presented.
Do either of my colleagues have questions? Yeah, selectmen.
So what were the figures that we had before then? What was the...
That was actually my question.
What did we approve before then? What were the rates?
Well, you previously approved, respectively, $70 for the smallest, $80 for my favorite one there, and 85 for the larger vehicle.
And then what for the loader?
And I'm recommending now to 75, 85, and 95.
The 110 was the same.
Okay, that's the same.
And the 110 stays the same.
Selectman Gulak, did you have any questions about this for Mr. Ferry?
No, I'm ready to make a motion.
Yep, I'm ready to accept.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the following rates for hired snowplow contractors as recommended. Four-by-four trucks, less than 110, $75 an hour. Trucks 110 but less than 26,000... Excuse me. Trucks one-ton but less than 26,000 pounds with at least a nine-foot plow, $85 an hour. Trucks with 26,000 pounds with at least a 10-foot plow, $95 an hour. Loaders with a three-yard bucket, $110 per hour. This includes the driver in the vehicle, right?
Correct.
Totally, okay. Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion passes.
Also, snow-related. We also... I anticipate the need to fill the gap, because obviously I have quite a bit of gap to be snow-ready in anticipating that. I'd like to commandeer the police department's pickup truck that's not being used now, that has a plow already on it. It would not be advantageous to keep the police plates on it, but I need this board's approval to switch it over to the highway department temporarily, so it'd at least be a backup vehicle for all hours, but I could put a driver in that, a hired driver, which we entertain also, in that vehicle. So if the board can entertain approving that tonight, so I can get the title and get the plate switched over, that'd be great.
Is the police chief aware of this? Or is he going to be surprised?
He is aware of it, yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I will make the motion that we grant permission to the highway superintendent to use the current police department pickup truck for snow removal purposes.
All right, I'm asking for it to be switched over to my assets.
On a temporary basis?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it'd be registered, either to have the town of Dayton on the registration or the highway department. Right now, we... You don't want the police plate on it.
I'm going to withdraw that motion, because now it's confusing. What you're asking for is us to approve your taking over the police department... Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the request of the highway superintendent that he be allowed to take over the use of the police department pickup truck with the plow on it, and that it be registered to his department.
Correct. I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. I just have one aside. This is not on the agenda, so I will ask that next time we only discuss things that are on the agenda. I know this is time-sensitive, so if we can get those items in before the meeting, that would be great. All right. Any further discussion?
I've waited for the chief to leave town.
I knew it was about timing.
Well, if it's a huge issue, he could drive it.[1175.33][1175.33](laughing).
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion passes.
We doing 6B next?
Yes, please.
This is a mess.
Well, we did 6A, so at least this one's in order. 6B is in order. We don't have to make a special motion.
Okay. So we have received some complaints about traffic concerns on Forest Street. We've sent out our police department and personnel there to monitor it and take a look at it. I, myself, have driven on it, and there has been a discussion of implementing three... Or implementing two new... Tom, if I have this wrong, correct me. Two new stop signs to make it... No, I'm wrong. To make a total of three? I'm wrong. Please go ahead.
All right, so I believe this is on the agenda tonight, because this board needs to respond to an email or a complaint or an inquiry of a complaint. Unfortunately, our police chief cannot be here and need him to weigh in on it officially, and we have not been able to discuss it collectively as departments. We had to move the department head meeting last week, and he's not available this evening. So ultimately, I believe it's going to be recommended that we delay any actual decisions made tonight on our recommendations. Where the conversation is going, in lieu of the complaint, our police department's already been involved on Forest Street with other issues, not just this one complaint, and we are well aware of that community's needs. We're leaning towards recommending an all-way stop at Spring and Forest, Prospect and Forest, and Tree Mountain Forest, and that's going to be a big traffic change. And it's going to involve... Mallory's going to weigh in on how we're going to approach that. I was wrong, Mallory, when I said this was going to be the first time this board's going to recommend, because we just did that earlier this year, Summer Street at Prospect. We did install a stop sign already. This board has done that. This is a huge traffic change. That recommendation's not based just on speed. It's based on the pedestrians that are in the neighborhood, visibility at the intersections. All them things are being considered, and it's going to change the neighborhood tremendously, and it's not to be taken lightly. And I need to have... We need to have a good discussion with the police chief and his sergeants under him also, because they have been weighing in on it, not just the speeding itself. But I don't know if that helps you, how to respond, but we are actively working on...
Well, I think that's the response.
We are actively working on the safety concerns there, not just the speed. And when you get to that point of having a public hearing, I think that's where she's going to go, I would make sure that particular complainant is well invited and be part of this process.
Mm-hmm. So we should wait until the police chief is here, correct?
So this is... Right. This is to present to you what the process is going to be, and make sure you're on board with it, and if you're not, we'll change it. What I'd like us to do is have a public hearing and invite the residents of that area to come into a meeting and discuss this with all of you, and get a formal recommendation based upon the change. And you have a document in your packet tonight talking about federal regulations and state regulations that we have to follow in order to implement something like a stop sign.
Here's my thing with public hearings. I agree with you 100%, but when we have them as part of the Board of Selectmen's meetings, like, we are at 9:30, and we have barely even got... touched anything on the agenda. So I would suggest that it would be on a week where we're not meeting.
Sure.
Because we can't have...
I would also suggest that with the amount of people this would impact, I would also suggest that.
Okay, that's fine with me. The other thing I will remind everybody is that we have a rule now that we need a unanimous vote to recess later than 11:00 p.m., so if we don't get through this... I don't plan on having it be unanimous, so I will be leaving at 11:00 p.m., so we need to speed it up.
Okay, so to be continued on that.
So we'll have a public hearing on a Wednesday off Wednesday.
And perhaps it should be at the Grange versus here.
Old Town Hall.
Potentially. We'll make sure... I mean, maybe even bigger, but we'll make sure that it's...
That would actually be really nice, actually. I agree with that.
A larger space.
Is there a need to respond to the email now, saying that we discussed it and that we are going to be having a hearing?
I mean, I think it would be where... Hopefully, he's watching, the resident's watching, but I think once we hear back from the police chief and know exactly what he's thinking, then we can do some firm correspondence and have a specific date set up, and then everybody will be invited to that.
Is there anything else we need to do about this?
On that item, no. This is just to keep you apprised of the situation.
Yeah, who's going to respond?
We'll take care of that. Right, it came into the Board of Selectmen, right? Yes, so we'll take care of it.
It did originally, yeah. It came into the Board of Selectmen's email address.
Yes, so we'll respond.
Do we just have 7F for Mr. Ferry?
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we take Agenda Item 7F out of order.
Okay. I'm going to say, before we start talking about this, 10 minutes.
Oh, it won't even take that long.
Perfect.
I'll second that motion.[1548.75][1548.75](laughing).
What is 7F?
The drainage easement.
7F is the drainage easement agreement on Spring Street.
Spring, summer.
Oh, okay.
It's finally all set? Oh, I'm sorry, you need to vote on your motion.
Has everyone had a chance to read it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, we're voting on the motion to...
Move out of order.
Out of order.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Okay. My apologies.
Not at all. We need to do some drainage repair work, and it just so happens it's on private property. So we've worked with the private property owner and their legal team, and we've developed an easement after many back and forth, but we all agree, we like the plan, we agree to the plan, we would like you to approve the plan. Mr. Ferry says he can do the work even in this, in the winter, but obviously, scheduling will be up to him and his schedule.
Do either of my colleagues have any questions, comments, or revision suggestions based on the document that's presented here before us this evening?
No, I've read through the whole thing. Attorney Dave Gay has gone through it.
Yes. Yes.
So I'm okay with it.
Second caller?
No, I was involved with it.
Okay. I am accepting motions.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the permanent drainage easement agreement with Landman Omnibus Eight Limited Partnership, and this is for 620 Spring Street, not Dayton.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. That motion passes. Mr. Ferry, was there anything else?
I'm not sure.
He's like nervous to leave now.
You're free to leave.
Before we find something else to talk to you about.
Thank you for helping out.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mr. Ferry, we appreciate it. Yes, Mr. Gale?
Is it possible to go to that of the, of this building, so that I can ensure that Mr. Ferry doesn't have to stay until...
Actually, I think that's going to be the next...
That is the next item. Yep, we're going right now, Mr. Gale, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
I didn't plan that.
Alright. We have a presentation on proposed Town Hall renovations. I suspect that the conversation will continue past tonight, so 15 minutes. Mr. Commissioner?
I'll try to keep it pithy under the circumstances.
What's that word?
Circumstances. Just kidding.
So, hello, everybody at home, I know it's a late night, and I don't want to interfere with the Selectmen conducting all of their business for this evening.
No, we appreciate it, Mr. Commissioner.
The purpose of this discussion tonight is to open dialogue with the Board of Selectmen regarding potential renovations that we want to do here at Town Hall.
What's the matter? What do you, what do you need?
There's only one original, there should be two, because we've got to give one to the other party. But that's all right, we can, we got one here.
You just do the last signature page, right, exactly.
We can sign the signature page.
Did you see my ingenuity? I apologize, Mr. Commissioner.
No, no, that's fine, that's important.
Not as important as you.
Oh, drainage is important.
You have my undivided attention, sir.
Sure. So, we've always discussed that Next Door Old Town Hall renovations were the start of a larger effort to enhance the entire campus here for town services. So now that Next Door is finished, and everybody at home will have an opportunity to see it at a formal ceremony, I believe that's going to be at the end of January, the Selectmen have formed a committee, and we are moving toward making that a momentous occasion. That said, the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen wanted to open up dialogue regarding this building as soon as possible, because we know how long things take, especially in government. And the Town Administrator and I, we came up with what we think are important concerns with the campus, and I will defer to the Town Administrator to bring those to light, and then we can expand the discussion.
Thank you. So we put together a little bulleted list for you, highlighting some of the needs in our current building, and if it's okay with you, I'll go over them, but if you don't want me to, I understand.
Can you highlight?
Sure. So we have some ADA compliance issues that have basically irked me since the day I started. We have space issues, lack of storage issues, we have, well, these signs that are posted on the glass door, that's a problem, and I also don't really like how it looks professionally. We have buildings and departments that are in desperate need of upgrades, the library being one of them. So we've developed a plan that hits upon all of these. We understand not everybody's going to love this, but we think that it's a good compromise, a fair plan. Based upon some feedback that we did receive on our, what I call Option One, we do have some ideas on how to address that. So that's where it lies with you. Do you want to, I'll kick it back to the building.
Sure, sure, yeah, this is a collaborative between you and I, obviously. So, that said, and just let me know how we're doing on time, and I think this is a discussion that's going to carry on, so we can certainly come back at future meetings. This isn't going to all get hammered out tonight. So, based on the conversation I had with Administrator Aronstein, I had some specific things that I thought were a concern here from a logistics perspective and expanding upon the bullet list. This room, I believe, for a Board of Selectmen's meeting is too small. That was sort of seen tonight. I've been in this building when we've had people lined up against the walls, people out in the hallway. So I think the, I know we have Next Door, but I also know that this is the Town Hall, and I believe the Board of Selectmen should still meet here. So, that said, I think the Board of Selectmen need a space that's larger than this to conduct their business in. We also need this space, in this room, to expand the offices, because you only have a certain amount of square footage available. So to do that, we are going to need to take over some of the spaces that are currently being utilized, this one in particular. One of the reasons that I'm looking at expanding on this level is mostly because of accessibility. If you notice the way Next Door was laid out, it was laid out where all town services are on one level. Although both levels of the building are utilized, therefore two different items. It's still a public building, but you come in and get served by a town department, you get, all the departments are on the same level, which is serviced by a handicap restroom and a handicap counter. Upstairs is a meeting space, which also has accessibility allowances, but the person coming in to see the building department doesn't need to go up to the, to the room upstairs, so an elevator wasn't required. The same concept would be applied here unless we fractured the office space and had it downstairs and upstairs. So the intent was not that we don't want to put an elevator in, but an elevator is very costly, it eats up a lot of money that could be well spent elsewhere. So the intent was, is it possible to expand the services upstairs without putting an elevator in and repurpose the downstairs for something separated from town government, at least town government offices? So that's where the idea came up, to put an addition on the front of this building, which would be the least costly place to put an addition on. That addition would do a few things. It would drastically reduce the length of the ramp, which comes from the parking lot. Tom and I have already discussed the repaving project, which should happen next year, where we can raise the elevation of the parking lot. If we lower the elevation of an addition on the front, we could cut that ramp down probably by 50%, which I know is a huge issue for most people who visit this building.
I'm out of breath when I get to the top of that thing.
Right. Yeah, and you're in good physical condition.
I wish I was that far, thank you, though.
Just for the record, I'm okay with walking off the ramp. I'm not out of breath.
Okay. So, so what that addition would do is it puts a building, or it increases the footprint of this building in the least costly place possible, because of the location, logistics, et cetera, et cetera. It would be a one-story building, addition, and it, my vision is that you come into a new foyer, which we can present to the town with the POW chair, a nice set of flags, the notice board, which would be much more professional than what we have out there now.
At an ADA compliant height?
Right, exactly.
Like a consolidated board, not just pictures taped on a window.
Right, exactly. We would eliminate all of that. We would have a nice message center, I go into a lot of different towns, I see LCD screens now, which direct you to where you need to go. And then, in that same addition would be the new Selectmen's Meeting Room, which I think should be the focus of where people see when they come in, especially on nights where you have, you have your meetings. Now, there would be an elevation difference between the two buildings because of the fact that we want to shorten the ramp, so there would be another small ramp within that addition to get you to this level. But there's, there's what we call an area of refuge in between, where you can, if you are in a wheelchair, you come up a much shorter ramp, get to the foyer, look what you need to do to conduct your business, have handicap accessibility allowances within it, so people with disabilities will still be able to conduct business. And then you would come onto this section, which would be only offices. And what I mean by that is the grand foyer would go away, because there would be no need for it. It would allow us to expand what is currently Administrator Aronstein's office, so that would increase square footage there.
Now for just me.
No, 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 no.
Or we would bring Karen.
Yeah, it would, it would take Karen, put her with the Town Administrator, which from an efficiency standard escalates, you know, how much work they can get done, because they'll be interact. Right. It would also be the first office that the patrons would see when they come into the Town Hall, which is the Selectmen's office. That would open up this corner, it would open up this space, and then we can...
Spread out.
Spread out, right. And I have not come up with a definitive plan of exactly how that would be, but certainly we know what we need to do.
I have one question.
Sure.
So it would be a smaller Selectmen's office than what we have now? I actually am okay with that.
Actually, I was planning on having a Selectmen's office in the, where the chambers are, in the new addition.
Okay, so off of the meeting room.
That's right, that's correct.
And just so the public knows, we call it the Selectmen's Meeting Room, we are not the only board that uses this room for the meetings.
Right, exactly. So, and I know the Planning Board has an issue with their meeting space now, which they shouldn't be meeting in an office, so that would allow that...
There's more people that probably go to their meetings than come to ours.
And they, they don't have space for that, like, I've been at them, and people are standing, they're outside the door. It's also a privacy and security issue for me. I don't think that any board should be meeting in their office.
Right.
The public should not be able to walk in and be into somebody's office while they're busy doing meeting work, and I just...
So what is the plan for planning?
Well, originally, the plan for planning was to move them next door, like we spoke of earlier in the process. And although the real estate is tight over there, I could relocate myself personally to another, to another area that would free up the area that I currently use, and planning could come over to that place, and then they would use the upstairs. Now, logistically, you would have potentially Conservation, Zoning Board, Board of Health, and Planning, all using the Old Town Hall. I had met individually with each board, and the Board of Health was willing to alternate with the Planning Board on Wednesdays, and the Zoning Board was willing to move their meeting to Thursday. And then Conservation, I hadn't got to talk to yet, we were hoping they would do Tuesday, and we would have meetings Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays at Old Town Hall, and then the remaining part of the week, it could be open for use.
May I make one comment on that?
Yes.
Just so the public knows, the reason why I think that's probably a good idea is because there have been many nights when they have stacked meetings, meaning planning, zoning, and, I'm making this up now, Concom, all have meetings around the same time on the same night, so you can't go to all of them, you have to choose one.
Right, I agree, and actually, that will eliminate those four boards from having that situation, because the Health Department and the Planning Department would have alternate Wednesdays where they would meet. And then the Board of Selectmen would be the only one where we may have, you know, meetings at the same time.
Sure.
I don't know that we can get away from that, because there's too many boards and committees, right?
Someone's always going to be meeting.
Right, but we would have two designated meeting spaces, which I think is important from an open-meeting law perspective, from a safety perspective, you know, the Planning Board seems to be having more and more people at their meetings, and quite frankly, it's only a matter of time before the Fire Chief and I say, "No more, that is an office."
There's literally 14 chairs in there?
Right, right, it should be an office. So that was the original intent. I, I will tell you that I did approach the Planning Board on this, and they were not receptive to moving to Next Door.
May I ask what the argument against it is? Because my, I'm thinking just strictly, like, what's good for people in a one-stop-shop. It makes sense to me to have all of the land use for, you know, those departments all together.
I, it made sense...
Maybe they'll talk, that'd be great.
It made sense to me as well. But then in talking to them, I said, "What is the, what are the two boards you deal with most often in your daily work?" And I actually thought it was going to be the clerk, because that was the discussion before. And she had said, "Assessors and tax collector." And I said, I was surprised, and then I said, "Well, number three must be the clerk, because of plans and decisions and all of that." So if the top three boards are located here, how much time do we waste walking back and forth to conduct regular business for the part-time employee already, right? Like, she's part-time. So I had concerns over that. And I brought those to Jim, we talked about it, and we developed kind of a point of B.
Yeah, so, so, and obviously, this plan is fluid, but the intent is to make sure that everybody has a space to work in. The building is handicap accessible and handicap compliant. By the way, everyone at home, we didn't build a building that's not compliant at the time it was built, some of the requirements weren't in place.
Was changed.
Right, exactly. But just, just to wrap it up, I, I believe that if, if a sizable addition is put on the front of this building, and we, we stay with that original model, I think I can come up with a floor plan that could potentially house the remaining departments within this building and create a break room for our town employees, which I think is needed.
Needed, absolutely.
I did it next door, and I think it should be done here.
Yeah.
And we would also be able to fully renovate the restrooms, have handicapped accessible counters, which none of our departments have except for Next Door in my building. So it solves a lot of issues. The other thing that does is it opens up the downstairs of this building, with the exception of the cable area, for another use. And that can be opened up for discussion, but we have the COA who's in trailers that were never intended to be occupied for more than 25 years, or whatever it's been. We have a library that needs a new home, so there might be a variant of what we can do to move and shuffle different things around, where we could open up, we can use the space downstairs in a manner it should be used, maybe open up some real estate on the campus for another building down the road for some other need that the town has. But I, you know, I think it's a plan that can work, I think it's a plan that can stay fluid, but it will be a fairly sizable project.
And there's just one item I wanted to bring to light. Part of this plan is also to, we've heard many times about boards and commissions and these sort of auxiliary volunteers, I don't mean that in a demeaning way, but kind of everything that makes town government run looking for office space. And so there's a, in the plan, there's a neutral, I call it, a neutral office that could be utilized by those people. So Parks and Rec comes to mind, the town historian.
I'm sorry, that was important, yeah, there was a small office that would be designated for any number of outside boards or committees to use if they needed a space to conduct business at a desk.
With like town...
Town equipment, yes.
Yeah, yeah, it would have a telephone, it would have a laptop.
Cemetery commission comes to mind.
Right, exactly, which we don't have any of that now, and I know Administrator Aronstein has fielded some concerns that people need a space like that. So we also addressed that, so I, we tried to think of everything.
Sewer department, you didn't mention that.
Yeah.
They would come up, no?
They would have to come up, that is correct, yes. So I still think that there is real estate next door that can be used. If I, if I could find the space for planning, then I may be able to find a place for some, another department, it just depends on which department that is. So, and, and don't think that we're all going to be crammed in over there next door, I would never allow that, we didn't do that to make it that way.
My, my concern is simply, like, for example, if you were to have your office in the conference room, I know there are boards right now, maybe this will change when they start meeting upstairs, wouldn't be able to meet there, like, they would be, that would be your office.
So, so the conference room was never designed to be a meeting room, because it's much too small, it's good for four persons. And quite frankly, the upstairs, as you know, is a beautiful space. So if I were to occupy the conference room with my office, quite frankly, someone coming in to speak to me now, I use the conference room, so it would still be my office. But if another department, like the Health Department or whatever, needed something, my office isn't a private space, if it needed to be used, it could be used, or they could simply go upstairs to use it.
I suspect they would.
They do, yeah.
So I don't think that's going to be a problem.
And I've had this conversation with the departments that are under the roof over there, there were no concerns, actually, the Zoning Board was very quick to say we could move to Thursdays, that wouldn't be a problem. So it seemed like people were willing to work to try to make this all more fluid. You know, having three or four meetings in here on one night is somewhat chaotic, so, you know, I, but I think we, but I think we have, we have a potential solution down the road. I know it would be a fairly sizable project, but I don't think it's intangible, I think it's, I think it's something I can do, and we need to do renovations here anyway.
That I totally agree with. We are at time, we're actually over time, so here's what I want everyone to do. I want everyone to write down their thoughts, comments, concerns, suggestions, how you want the project to be, and I think that we should reconvene, probably not next, this is, that's not enough time, but maybe the first meeting in January, and then we can start discussing the actual logistics of how this is all going to happen.
So, and that's January 9th, just so everybody knows their deadline.
Do you think we should, we should allow us a couple of minutes to comment on all the information that we, we just given?
But we, we don't have a plan, so I just feel like, what are we commenting on?
Well, we had a suggested plan, right? So we have a suggested plan before us, so I want to make a comment that I'm concerned about the expense.
Of course.
We are still in the process of paying for our new police station, which I was in favor of. We spent some money next door, which added, I don't know how many square feet we added to the space that we needed. We're talking about a library in the future, possibly in addition to the middle school. I don't see where these funds are going to, the money's going to come from, and I think we have to be concerned about that. We've got to separate wants from needs, we have to be ADA compliant. I'd like to see what the figure is on what needs to be done, and what the figure is to do that.
Well, and that's my point of why we should wait, because we don't have any figures. We're all concerned, but I'm also concerned with the, with the space crunch here as well. Something has to be done.
It's just that within the past year, we've, we've added a lot more space, and now all of a sudden, we're still got, we're lacking space over here. I think we have to be cautious about this, and we're just, and we took the figures that you suggested, and what the plan is.
But the problem is, we added space over there, we didn't actually add space over here.
No, we took the ZBA out of here, we took, we took the Building Commissioner out of here, we took the Veterans Agent out of here, so we did take, you know, create some space over here, so, and we do have a bigger, we do have a bigger meeting room over there, so.
Just, just real quickly, and I, and I know we need to move on.
Seven seconds.
I, I agree with, I agree with your comments, but if we do renovations here, and we move towards ADA complacency, we're going to need to put an elevator in, and...
I want to see the cost, that's...
Okay, it's just, most, most building contractors, when they're going to spend 225,000 or whatever it is on an elevator, you try to move that towards what can we do to the building if there isn't exactly a need for that elevator, so...
Elevators need maintenance.
Right, maintenance is ongoing inspections, et cetera, et cetera.
We need to see what the figures for the elevator first.
Well, and that's why I felt like it would be more productive to have that conversation about the cost. I think we're all, obviously, we're concerned about costs. But we, there are no figures yet, so I don't see the point in going back and forth.
I would just like to clarify, and I would actually request if we could hear from Mr. Gale as well, but we didn't come here, at least I didn't come here, thinking that this would be approved overnight.
No.
I just want to know if you... I just wanna know if you like this idea, and then we can go figure it out. Right, but like, if there was some reason that you vehemently oppose building onto the front, I mean, we'd like to know, because that's an integral part of how this would all work.
Right, of course.
So, I agree. I'm a little concerned about costs as well, and how we could possibly fund this. How do we keep government going, to Mr. Aguirre's part, who, who said, like, that's no easy feat? How do we keep the services and have this ongoing? And if we don't have space to move an office, where do we go? And I'll be quiet.
Sure. Uh, before, one second, Mr. Gale. Selectmen Goulart.
Um, yeah, we all agree we need space. Um, I have similar concerns regarding costs. Um, we need to start some kind of an idea what this building would look like. We don't want another drawing like we got for Main Street, the library. We don't want this billion, we don't want this building disfigured. Uh, that's exactly what I'm talking about, all right?
Yeah.
Um, I think that, uh, Mr. Pacheco's points are good. Um, the money that we spent at Nextdoor was well-spent. I think people are gonna be extremely happy with that. But we also said that that was gonna alleviate the crowding here, because we would then reallocate space. Now we're talking about adding on. One of the things we talked about was adding on going that direction at two levels, meaning underneath would be parking, so that you would be, um, first floor would be at grade, so to speak. So there's been a lot of discussion, and it, it, I just, we need a lot more discussion.
I agree.
I mean, but, and we make them up with more ideas.
We just have, you know, word, words on a paper and no-
Right.
Figures, so it's impossible for me to imagine how it should be, how much it might cost. I can't, 'cause I just, you know, we don't have that in.
This was just an intent to open the dialogue, and if the selectmen come back and say, we want two options, uh, one without increasing the footprint, adding an elevator, but, and one with an addition, then we can explore that. This isn't all gonna happen in a couple of days, so.
I think Mr. Gale's gonna have to weigh in on this, now that he's, we have an ADA person on board.
Mr. Gale, sir, you have the floor.
So, I'll make this short, but obviously, that's why I'm sitting here. Because I, I think that the, the concept of what Town Administrator and City District Commissioner are doing forward makes a lot of sense on one level. The cost factor is gonna be even less. Adding in the ADA components to do it the way it really needs to be done now, and Jim is generally very good at, at, at dealing with a lot of the ADA components for, for buildings in town. Having said that, there's more of a concept now to go to a universal design method. A universal design methodology encompasses a lot more than just, quote, ADA, unquote, because it takes into account a lot of other types of disability. It takes into account seniors. Takes into account all different types of thing, things. Lighting in the building, exposure to, to, to different places in the building, air venting systems. Um, those are the kinds of things that if you're gonna look at this, you wanna consider going to universal design component potentially now, having, and the reason I say that also, and as I think, you know, Jim knows, there are a lot of regulations still on the table right now for ADA ch- design changes between the state and federal government, that are probably gonna be drastically changed in the next two years. And if, if we look at the ADA compliance components that are out there right now, we may be non-compliant by the time things are off the jury board and things are ready to happen in a few years. So I'm just throwing that out there, um, because I think it's important to keep all of those concepts in mind. And whether you look at an elevator or not, depending upon where it is and how you're gonna service people from, if you have a library space downstairs to get them up here without having them go outside, how's that gonna be handled? So those are still things that have to be addressed, if they have different types of disability and so forth. Lowering the counters, as you said, um, those are things that are gonna have to be addressed. You know, the ramp is a mess right now. And I think if this is a project that ultimately the town decides is, you know, by the time the, the dollar fingers are put together and all the engineering reports are everything you're in, this may not be done for seven to ten years. And if that's the case, then I think that maybe a step back a little bit and look at some of the short-term things that can be done, such as the ramp, are things to focus on more immediately. The, the ramp, the heights of some of the elevation, when a resident comes to the counters to be served here, things like that. The handles on the doors, you know, for, for the building, for levers versus knobs, things like that. Those may be things that should be addressed more on a local level now, within the next couple of years. So I'm just throwing that out there, because I think it's, those may be changes that can be done more effectively on a short-term basis.
Thank you, Mr. Gale, and I hope when we continue this discussion, that you will be able to be there. So that we can-
No, Joe.
So that we can, uh, benefit from your expertise, and we appreciate it very much. All right. It is ten o'clock. We have one hour left. Did anybody, actually, no, I'm not even gonna open that door.
Um, Mr. Gale, do you need a ride tomorrow morning?
Um, please.
Okay, thank you.
Seven fifteen.
Uh, seven fifteen, yes. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Gale, no, it's okay. Mr. Gale, Mr. Ferry, have a great night.
Thank you.
Okay. We are moving on to the policy manual review. We are not going to skip it. I am here, here's what we're going to do. We're going to do it in one chunk. If you ha- I'm going to call on each selectman. You are going to provide the town administrator with your comments, suggestions, whatever, completely rewrite it, trash it, whatever your comment or your suggestion is. And we're gonna go selectman by selectman, and then we're going to take it to a vote. And whether it fails, passes, burns in a dumpster somewhere, that's what the result's gonna be tonight. Okay. Policy manual review, Selectmen Goulart, you have the floor.
Uh, before you do that, I wanna make sure that the really priority things that are left, that have to get done tonight, get done. One of them is that change order for the police station. That-
Actually, correct.
We gotta do that tonight.
So we need to, um, the internship program proposal we need to do, because we have an intern, John Boulay, supposed to return. We have to rescind the emergency vehicle exhaust system vote, and the, um, designation of the evaluator and the job descriptions have to be done.
So, would you just say those again, please?
Yes. Uh, so it's old business items B, uh, excuse me, C, as in Charlie.
Yeah.
D.
Yeah.
E. New business, D, and G.
Oh, dear God.
We can do it.
I just don't know where the time went tonight.
Okay. Well, we, we had to have a hearing, and we had to let the people talk, I mean, whatever. Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna move that we take Agenda Item Eight G, Approval of Change Order for Police Station, out of order.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, the, why are we doing this? Why do we do that every time? What is stopping us from just saying approval of the change order for Dayton? Is, is there a helicopter that's gonna come out of nowhere, and people are gonna drop in and arrest us for not, just like, moving on?
I don't believe it's necessary, but it's a formal, you know, to let everybody know. I don't believe it's necessary, but you've done it all along. I, I'm not-
I can tell you on every school project that I was involved in, school committee had a vote on every single change order. And we've been fortunate. We haven't had many the school projects want.
Were you asking about the change order? I'm sorry. You were talking about the change order. I'm not, that's not what I was talking about.
That's not what I was talking about.
Right, you were talking about taking things out of, out of order.
Okay.
Maybe we should have a policy change.
Oh, you mean, no, that's, that's, that's parliamentary procedure. You have to, you have to vote to take things out of order.
I've seen meetings, and I don't know if it was legal or not, where they, they make that vote at the beginning of the meeting, that they can preserve the right to take things out of order, and you're all about alls.
Okay, we all need to start doing that.
Okay, so we can check into that.
Yeah, definitely. Okay.
I did assume it was part of the show.
We have to take the vote, by the way. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. This motion passes. Approval of the change order for Dayton Police Station, this should be done in ten minutes, correct?
I don't have much to say. I mean, we're kinda stuck between a, a, you, you have to do it. Um, the committee voted to take care of it. They did have a special meeting, um, in time for this meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So it's unfortunate, but change orders happen. They're still within budget, though. I mean, I, it's not dire.
So are we voting on the twenty-four thousand?
Um, just wanna make sure that's the total, but I believe-
Contract sum will be increased by this change order in amount of twenty-four thousand nine hundred fifty-three dollars and fifty cents.
If it's two. Yes, right, Karen, that's everything, yeah. Okay. And, uh, number five, okay, perfect, yes. So all the change numbers are listed in that top small print paragraph. But yes, um, Selectmen Goulart, twenty-four thousand nine hundred fifty-three and fifty-seven.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't, on the front page.
Right there.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Um, that's, that's the total, and attached to the break, is the breakdown?
That, that was-
(cough) Mr. Chairman, (cough) excuse me. Um, I move that we approve the contract sum of the change order in the amount of twenty-four thousand nine hundred fifty-three dollars fifty cents, making the new contract sum, including this change order, four million five hundred fifty-seven thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars and four cents. And this, uh, change order is coming from the contingency.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, further discussion?
Well, I, I assume that we've all looked at all of these, and I guess they've already, it's already happened, but five thousand dollars to move the boulders to the front, what, what exactly happened? Why were they, do we know why?
Is that for the corner?
I have a, do you have a-
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, they were already seated in certain areas, and the police chief didn't like it in that fashion. He felt that there was, uh, it was a hindrance where a vehicle could still make its way to the front of the building, so he asked that they be relocated.
At a cost of five thousand?
I don't know how much it costs.
But was that the additional, it was to get additional of them, right?
It, it may have been purchase of additional purchase. I didn't do a count, but my opinion is you can't, even reconfiguration, you may still have gaps. So it could have very well been to purchase another one or two of those textured concrete blocks.
That's not what it says. It says after the request of a client, the costs are associated with relocating the boulders to the front of the building after being installed for the layout provided. I understand, I understand, in fact, that was a concern of mine when I viewed it. I don't want cars in the front. We don't want any opportunity for a car to come in the front. I'm just concerned about the, it's already happened. It's five thousand dollars.
Yeah, I-
And it's from the contingency.
I can't speak to the cost, but-
But even the contingency is still taxpayers' money, and if we don't spend it, then we get it back, or-
Mm-hmm.
It's money that we don't have to borrow, I, I guess, that's why.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure procedurally, if the committee, the building committee votes to approve it, I would, I'm sure Selectmen reserve the rights, taxpayer money, for them to qualify the number.
At which point, they will not be paid for that, but I think we would have legal trouble there.
Oh, my God, it would be a complete disaster.
I, I know what you're saying, and I think the point's well made.
Five thousand dollars, whoa.
And should be.
When we say boulders, they're big, I mean, you've seen, they're, yes, yeah, they're, they're huge, so it's not, uh-
If, if, this may be speculation, but I'm just saying, if there was no machinery on-site to move them, and they had to bring machinery in to do that after the fact, then I can see how the cost can be, yeah.
That's my, that's my thought.
Yeah.
Do we have any further discussion on this? Hearing none? Sorry, I was just giving everyone time, sorry. Here, did you have anything, Selectmen?
No, no.
Hearing none, let's take it to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. That motion passes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, I move that we take, I'm gonna do these in a block. I'll list them all. I move that we take the next four items in the order in which I will read them. Seven C, seven D, seven E, and eight D.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes.
Uh, this is the second time it is coming before you. It's the internship program proposal.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I actually have had a conversation with the health agent, who, um, we kind of decided that they would also benefit greatly from having an intern. So I think this is a timely proposal. Uh, we have had one in the accounting department over the summer. He worked out very well. We would like him to come back and see the budget in action, which is actually probably the best part of his education that he could possibly get here. Um, and this proposal would just sort of make it town-wide and overarching, so I'm requesting your approval for that.
Before we get into discussion, we have three minutes. Selectmen Goulart, did you have any questions, comments, suggestions, revisions? You hate it, you want us to trash it?
No, the only question I had was, the first line refers to partnership with local students, then we say Dayton residents will receive priority. I was thinking dy- local meant Dayton. It doesn't.
Well, if we had a high school student, it could have been a, um, a Rehoboth resident.
Or like Bridgewater-Rainham student, or, yeah.
Or a BP. Uh, actually, I don't know how BP would translate, but who knows? Well, construction, actually.
Okay, no, that answers my question. That was the only thing I questioned. So, no, that's it.
I did not have any questions about it. Um, we had sort of discussed this before. Um, and I think it would be good for the town. Um, and I will, I have one suggestion.
Sure.
If we could somehow incorporate this into like our finalized policy manual?
Oh, yes.
Are you okay with that?
Sure.
Selectmen Pacheco?
Uh, my concern is it says will be paid. Do we know how much they're gonna be paid?
So we started John off at twelve dollars an hour. Uh, minimum wage is eleven. I thought it would be a nice, you know, compensation. As of, as somebody who slaved away in the capital in Washington DC, I feel your pain, interns, so.
I've done internships, and we've done them at the court, and nobody's got paid, so it's, it's not a lot of money, so we're not, it's coming out of whose budget is it coming out, like, when you say the Board of Health, they have somebody.
So they would provide, in their budget request, funding for that. Um, it came back a personnel line for the accounting department when we did it over the summer. Um, going forward, I'd like to put it in my budget and have it be an intern program.
Do they have, they have the money now, because you said there's an immediate need for this, the-
I, I didn't say immediate. I said there's some wor- some, that could happen. I don't know if they're ready to take somebody on like that, but I know that that's in their, their thought process. So by the next fiscal year, we should be able to accommodate that.
So that we're not hiring any interns until?
We are, we're hiring John, which is why I-
Which has already been-
He's already been, yeah, right.
I know you had something, Selectmen Goulart.
Yeah, I just, when you mentioned the health agent, um, I'm wondering if we should strike local in partnership with students to provide, and the reason I say that is, that student we had from Boston University was not-
Oh, that's right, no.
So if we just say partnership with students, strike the word local, and then you say down here, the Dayton residents will get preference. But if we have another one like that person from Boston University, she was a godsend.
Well, and then I think you're getting into someone's opinion of what's local and what's not, and I just think-
You're right.
Student is objective, like, you're either a student or you're not.
And she turned out to be really special for what they needed her for, you know, so.
I'm completely minimal to that.
Okay, so I will entertain motions on this. Did you have another?
No.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I saw you moving out of the corner of my peripheral vision. Um, so I will accept motions to approve this with Selectmen Goulart's, uh, suggested amendment of striking local.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the proposal for an internship program and with, uh, striking the word local from the first sentence.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. And I will just say, and I know this is not what you were saying, but I do strongly feel they should be paid, because I just feel like if they're not paid, then internships in general are skewing towards those who are wealthy enough to not need to get paid.
Also, the fair, the, the fair labor laws, um, if, the, the caveat is if they are providing something that the town will use in the future. Well, one could, in my opinion, one could argue that they're always providing something that the town can use in the future. They're creating public documents, so.
Well, at the court, I hate to believe this, but at the courthouse, they were getting credit, college credit brought, so that was their benefit. And some of them actually got hired by the court system, because of their work, so.
That would take, and, and I agree, like, I've done internships and gotten college credit. Um, but that would take a lot of legwork in terms of setting something up with a university, and I'm not saying it's not, we could move towards that, and I'm okay with that, but at least we have something in place where we can start. And if that's where it moves, I know people at Bridgewater, for example, who might be able to help something like that get off the ground. But I'm happy with having something on the books, and then- but I'm happy with having something on the books, and then however it evolves is, is, I'm okay with.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next one?
So, oh, I'm sorry, Madam Administrator?
The next item is, I was here last meeting, requesting that you vote to award a contract to a company for the exhaust, the emergency vehicle exhaust removal system, and we had a bid protest, and the AG's office and I had a conversation, so my recommendation is that you rescind that award and cancel the process. The reason I'm asking this is because my scope that I wrote stated that we would award based on best value, and in this particular case, the chosen vendor last time had a five-year warranty, and I translated that to the best value, and that's not, that's not okay, apparently, right. And there were some other things in the scope, so I'd like you to rescind the award, cancel the process, we'll start over.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we, excuse me, rescind the award of emergency vehicle exhaust removal system and cancel the process as recommended.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. Are we moving to reviewing and approving the job descriptions, which I know we need to do?
So this item and the next item that we're going to discuss are very important due to time and making sure that we are on track with what we have rolled out as our evaluation process. So you have a...
Is it okay, no, no, I don't apologize.
I'm trying to go quick.
Before, no, it's okay, before we begin, I think we'll start with ten minutes, and I wanna do it the same type of thing where each selectman gets a chance to uninterrupted give all of your comments, concerns, revisions, questions.
Can I just make one?
Sure, of course.
Statement, the town accountant and I, I just wanna let you know, we did develop an updated job description, and what you have is, is that product that we worked on together. And the health agent, the animal control officers was reviewed by the Board of Health and voted on, the health agent is still with the Board of Health for December twentieth, but that's fine, I mean, if there's just one. Everybody else that I have worked with, or that is on this list, has worked with me. We have updated them to Form minus one, the Council on Aging, we did make one change, she agreed with it and was fine. The building commissioner's contract, if you vote to approve as drafted here, will spark discussions on a, I called it a contract, I'm sorry, his job description will spark discussions on a contract, because it is added work. And that's all I have.
So, the town accountant that I got last week is not the one we're voting on tonight?
Correct, she had a death in the family, so she was out, I wasn't able to meet with her.
Right, so it's not this one, all right, so I haven't looked at the other one yet, because I just got it tonight. What's this, the fire chief's all set, right?
Yes.
That's all done. Council on Aging, okay, what order do you wanna take these in?
Do you have this?
Yeah, there's like a list, so I, what I, my suggestion, what I would like to see is each selectman just goes... Maybe you don't have any, you know, suggestion on police chief, but you do for council on aging, so now is the time, just...
Or what you, another idea is you can do it like the budget, and you could just go, and anybody can hold. If there's some that are fine, we can just move on, I can start it on those, and...
The only one I would, what would prefer to hold is just the town accountant. For, simply because I just got it.
You just got it, you just finished it today.
The other ones I went through, I actually, first of all, I appreciated the fact that this counts as my time, so I'm not gonna speak after this on this item, no, it's going. I think, so first of all, I appreciate the fact that when it came to someone who serves on a board or oversees a board, the board then, like animal control, the board then approved that, I assume health agent as well. So I have no issue with that, and I don't particularly have any issue with the other job descriptions, other than again, town accountant, simply because I didn't have time to look at what was, may have been updated, so I'm going to let my colleagues, Mr. Selectman Pacheco, you have the floor, sir.
I did have an opportunity to look at the town accountant job description, and I'm okay with that. The council on agent, I do think it needs to have additional work on it, as well as the animal control officer we're still waiting for.
No, that one was approved, it's the health agent, I'm still waiting on the Board of Health.
Okay, it says updated to Form under review with Board of Health.
Right, so those change, this I prepared for you for the packet, and there's been some developments today, and I found out today that she, it was updated, it was approved, excuse me, and then the health agent and I took a look at his.
So was that in that packet then, yes, it is, right?
Should be.
Yep.
The other item is that Jonathan Gale, as our EEO officer, well, equal employment officer, did look at all of these as well, and I thank him for that work.
So I'm satisfied, I've gone through them all, I'm satisfied.
Okay, I get questions, oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's okay, I would never cut you off, I just wanna clarify, so you're okay with all of them, except you want us to hold council on aging, animal control, and health agent?
Not the, the health agent, I've already, I've read it today, and I'm, I'm okay with that, was the town accountant and council on aging, so my major is...
Town accountant, town accountant and council on aging.
Okay, so just those two, okay, Selectman Gulart, I'm sorry.
Is that a second list?
No.
Yeah, December eleventh, I got November's list.
Oh yeah, this is a newer one.
All right, so...
Do you wanna just look at my list of, of the four?
Okay, so that, so this was in, this was not in the package I got yesterday? Because this is the one I've been working off of, all right, so, okay, here's, December eleventh is the new one, okay, so I just wanna make sure, fire chief is okay, hold on the town accountant, who else did you say?
He just said town accountant and council on aging were his two that he wants to hold, everything else was okay, and I had concerns.
All right, the ones that I looked at, again, were the ones I got last week, so I haven't looked at tonight, so I got...
Police chief, fire chief, that, go ahead.
I got questions on police chief, veterans agent. Now, I don't know if this one got separated out, animal control officer slash animal inspector, those are two different jobs, and we don't appoint the inspector.
They are, they voted to merge these two together, that, that came from...
They cannot do that, the animal inspector is appointed by the state, not this board, so that's an error, that's an error.
That is actually like object, I'm just talking about sheer objection, that is correct, it does come from the state.
Yeah, so what they need to do is, they can keep the same stuff, but they gotta have a paper that says animal inspector and animal control.
Why couldn't we even have one for animal inspector?
Because the state requires it.
No, no, I know, but if it's appointed by the state...
Why does the Board of Health have to do a job description for animal inspector?
Because the Board of Health oversees the position, because...
But we wouldn't be evaluating her as animal inspector.
It would mean nothing, exactly, exactly, I'll, I'll just tell them that they need to take it away.
This is all for, so the public understands, this, we needed these job descriptions so that we can do, remember when we overhauled that performance evaluation, and we did that policy, this is for that, so just so everybody understands.
I think it would be, even though we're not gonna evaluate the animal inspector, I think it would be wise to have a job description, because this is the total confusion that happens, this has been going on for years, that I can remember sitting at a Board of Selectments meeting and appointing the animal inspector, then we said, no, no, that's a state thing. But, that's all I'm saying, so, all I'm asking is, on this one, a hold just for tonight until we can get this thing straightened out. The, the duties per se, you know, I just added a couple of more grammatical things, but, but anyhow.
So, if I am correct, I know it's late, but, so what, the list right now we're holding on is police chief, town accountant, council on aging, veterans agent, and animal control officer.
Yeah, that's what I got.
Okay, and everything else is okay, too, we can vote on the, the rest tonight, okay. So I am accepting motions, and what I will ask is, Selectman Gulart, if you could give a copy of your revisions to the town administrator, and she'll get it to whoever, whatever board may be making those changes, or she...
Yes.
Will find someone who can help her make them, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, I think it's just a matter of pulling stuff apart.
Okay, so I'm accepting motions to approve the job descriptions for fire chief, administrative assistant, building commissioner, highway superintendent, and health agent, as presented this evening.
I saw move.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion.
No, I had, I had one question on highway superintendent, and it may have gotten corrected.
I think I put in his physical environment, something to do with the fire department, and I did change that, okay.
Oh, that wasn't, no, it was, when I read it, I just thought, what, what does that mean?
Man, am I so happy I put their, the little footers, ugh, not saving me.
Oh, I know one of the things that I wondered about was qualifications, down the bottom.
Are we on highway superintendent?
Yes, page one at the bottom, bachelor's degree preferred, normally you say in what?
Correct, what would you like your highway superintendent to have?
Ecology, earth science, construction, I'm thinking about those people that turn up with engineering.
Engineering, yeah.
Engineering, yeah.
Engineering or related, yeah, I like the ecology thing, though, the stormwater and all that good stuff.
Yeah, and...
I took ecology, I can tell, maybe it's changed since when I took it, I was a biology major, was, would not help me be a highway superintendent.
He knows quite a bit, though.
No, I know he does.
He helped me so much.
I'm just saying, if that was all I knew, and then I got a job as a highway superintendent, scary.
Right, well, they don't teach highway...
There was a reference, something about forest, or forestry, or something, and I looked at it.
Was it tree warden and tree management?
So what that is, what you're remembering is on my top sheet last time, and today, if you look under that, he is telling you, that was his communication, I'm passing along, we need to address the forestry aspect that he fulfills right now.
Okay.
And he's, he's the tree warden, so it's confusing, because he's elected as such, but he is just letting us know, we need to address that at some point.
Okay, so we're only talking about the highway superintendent in this writing, and the tree warden, or tree management, or whatever it's gonna be, that's gonna be a separate thing.
That's just something different, and...
Okay, all right, I don't have a problem with the highway superintendent then, it was just that one thing that threw me for that highly contested position that everyone wants.
We have a motion and a second, to approve the job descriptions for fire chief, administrative assistant, building commissioner, highway superintendent, and health agent, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. Madam Administrator, before we move on from this agenda item, is it your expectation that we will try to get the other ones fleshed out by next week, or are we doing first week of January?
I would, it needs to be next week, and I'll tell you why, because we are on a tight schedule.
I can photo these, when I get a chance, get them to you.
Okay, thank you, we have to get this in, in motion, because our budget process makes everybody know, like, how they have to do all of their stuff in January, so I was hoping to do them if I am designated the next couple of weeks, but I'm up against the holidays, so, but this is only a handful, I mean...
No, this is, yeah, we can get this.
Yeah, and I've, I've marked these up, but I don't wanna take the time to go through all of this tonight.
Well, and it should be with me when I want to.
It's five, one, two, three, four, animal control.
Animal control, accountant.
Yeah.
COA, police chief.
And veterans agent.
Oh.
Yep. Okay, Madam Administrator, can we move on to, well, I'll need a motion to move, oh, sorry, I won't...
Speed rated.
I'll make the motion that we go to eight D.
D, thank you.
You actually don't need that, you've already done it, it was part of the blanket.
Oh, that's right, we did that in the beginning.
What this means is, per our evaluation policy, it's either the Board of Selectmen, or it's designee to evaluate these department heads.
Are we gonna have to vote on this every year because of the language and the policy?
No, it's, it's all up to you, it's up to you.
And then if we wanna change it, if you are, and the next year, the board, for whatever crazy reason, says we wanna do the evaluation.
But the, the caveat is if it's done by the board, there are, it has to be done in an open session.
Open meeting, yeah, of course.
You can't share each other's, your evaluation.
It's like how we have to do yours, yeah, no, not a fan, so I actually support having the town administrator be our designated evaluator, I actually think we spoke about this before, and we all agreed, but we didn't actually vote, so we're here having a formal vote.
I'll make the motion that the town administrator be the designated evaluator.
We have a motion and a second, discussion?
I just wanna let you know that you will be receiving the evaluations.
Are you giving us work?
Just, just reading, just light reading.
And we, and I expect that my colleagues and I will be looking at, you know, how, how you evaluated...
What did I say?
These employees, any further discussion?
I don't need to clarify that she doesn't evaluate herself.
Yes, oh, yes.
Oh, yes, she does, it's the beginning of the form.
Self-evaluation, yeah, correct, but we will play a role in her evaluation as well. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes. I wanna thank my colleagues, because we got through a lot really quick just now, so, we...
We did our homework.
We literally, no, I'm proud of everyone, I really mean that, I'm just a little tired and cranky, and I apologize. Okay, so let's go back to the policy, just give me a moment, actually, okay, let's go, if it's okay, I think we might need a motion, Selectman Gulart, to old business seven B, vote on March twenty-nine, Board of Selectmen's meeting schedule, I do think we should, that's just a formality, the one that we had last time, you must have been delete, delete happy on the keyboard.
Wait a minute, did we vote, when you take them out of order, then you always go back to where you left off.
Yes, so we need a vote to go to seven, a motion.
No, no, you don't need, no, you're going back to where you should have been.
Well, where we should have been was the policy review.
Yeah, is actually town administrator's report. So we need a motion to move to seven B.
I'll make a motion that we...
Did we do seven A?
No.
I'm making a motion that we do seven B next.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes, so...
I apologize, I left March off.
No need to apologize, you are just busy. So, just so the public is aware, it, the last schedule, we corrected it since then, we're taking a formal vote tonight. It did not have March twenty-nineteen, I assure you, we are meeting twice in March of twenty-nineteen, so we're here tonight to vote on this amended Board of Selectmen's meeting schedule. So I am entertaining motions, I do have one thing, before we re-release this, if we can change the seal.
It's already, I already changed it, I apologize for that, yeah.
Thank you, no, it's okay, no more apologies.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we have a March scheduled for twenty-nineteen, March thirteenth, and March twenty...
Are you sure you wanna meet in March?
With the, you know, in our town administrator's defense, all of us got the same thing that she presented.
I didn't catch it at all.
And not one of us caught it, so, I'm glad somebody, I wanna say somebody on Facebook caught it.
Chris Chantinay, always keeping us on our toes.
I didn't wanna give him credit.
Sorry, it was him.
So I actually noticed it, but was totally okay with not meeting in March, so...
For Florida, right?
It's like a super busy time for us, we can't not meet.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
So, what we approved before had something left out of it?
March, all of March.
Okay, so then, all we need to do is vote to approve the, no, the revised, the schedule as revised. Because March is in there, and this is the revised schedule.
And we already sent it out, yeah, I like that, thank you. Are you seconding with your amendment?
Who made that motion, I didn't make that motion.
All right, can you...
It's her motion.
Can you get your motion out? No, you have to take it.
It's just gone.
I'll say my motion.
Oh, okay.
No one seconded it, you're right, Selectman Gulart.
Okay, so I make a motion that we approve the revised Selectmen's meeting schedule as presented tonight.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. Next on the agenda, I think it would behoove us to go back to the policy manual review, no motion necessary. Madam Administrator, if it's okay with you, so here's how I wanna do this, I'm thinking fifteen minutes, we had this same packet, well, I've had the packet for like three years, so I know it's in it, I know you just got a packet, correct. So, I want to have you say your opening remarks on this section, and then each selectman will have time uninterrupted to give their suggestions, comments, revisions, throw it in the... comments, revisions, throw it in the trash.
For me.
Okay.
Okay, so I tried to, understanding that last time was a very lengthy time, I tried to pick and choose what I thought would be quote-unquote easier.